I believe meeting managers, I think we can begin. Yes? Sure, that's fine, go ahead. Well, Tom, Tom Wilson, I believe, is not going to be here, and that's the only one that I've heard of. And Ryan, okay. Okay. Haven't heard, okay. You guys are in charge.
All right, welcome everybody, and welcome to all the staff who are here today, thank you so much for coming out. I know it's your favorite thing to come out on a Monday evening, right? So, but thank you, we really do appreciate your time and being here. And today, as Ms. McLaughlin said, we'll be missing two board members, Mr. McElveen and Mr. Wilson. And, but we believe the rest of the board members will be here, and we will begin talking about the English Language Learners Program, and that's agenda item number one. Mr. Marty Smith will begin our discussion.
And thinking, I believe that Dr. Braybrand may want to start the meeting off this evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here, I just want to thank my crew for coming out and doing all the work around this. I, um, I, I want you to just know, and I know you all have the one pager here. You know, this has been a three-year study, and you all saw it a couple of years ago, and then year two was supposed to be presented in June, and I know other things were going on. I'm certainly aware of that, and now we're here, but I'm glad, because I think it's going to be helpful and help really understand how we're aligning all of our EL services for outcomes for our students. You'll see some of the recommendations, which I just kind of want to cut to the chase with a little bit. Five key things, having a single FCPS division-level unit to oversee coordination of delivery of the learning experiences for EL kids, I think we can be tighter. Directing this to explore concerns of schools about the constraints of time and personnel, and look at alternatives to that if necessary, so that there's more flexibility around how to do that at each school in each region. Also have this division-level unit create, disseminate, and monitor expectations for schools around their organizational structures. We've had some variability, and we want to look at making sure best practices exist in all of our schools for EL learners. Ensure our professional development plan includes opportunities to increase school staff knowledge and skills. Again, that's really some more of the PD that I think you're going to see as we go to Thursday night, and you all prioritize, one of the things I want to do is really have strategic PD around what we're trying to do in our strategic plan. And then look at revising the high school level, um, school counselor staffing standard for a weighted needs-based staffing factor for EL Level 1 and 2 students. If we can repurpose as funding allows, so those are the five big things, a lot of it's around PD and structures. Building consistency in every classroom and every school around EL best practices is one of the big things we need to do, and I'm confident this team's going to be able to do that, so. I hope that was a good, I hope I didn't steal the whole whatever.
You gave the whole presentation.
The whole presentation away, but that leaves just more time for questions.
Marty, can I just tell, say for people, for board members or people who are following along, Dr. Braybrand, what he was referring to were, these were the recommendations to the superintendent, which is what this presentation will lead up to, but that comes from the report, the English Learner Study Final Report and Addendum. So if people are online or following or looking for it when they listen to this later. So, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, and we have a, a unique opportunity tonight, because as Dr. Braybrand stated, the report has been complete for quite some time. And, but with that, staff has had an opportunity to then actually implement many of the recommendations in the report. So not only will you hear from our Office of Research and Strategic Improvement around our programs and services for English learners, you'll also hear the staff response to those recommendations. And we've also yet again had an opportunity to provide an addendum to the report where we have some updated information, and so you'll see that again in the, in the addendum where we've gone out and have provided some additional student achievement data. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Ferrer, who's a specialist in, in our office. Ms. Aruda, as you can see, she's been going in and out with coughing. As soon as she's able to come back in and, and present, she will do so, but at this point, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Thanks, Marty. If we can pull up the one pager, that would be great.
Um, ladies, we, we need, we need you to pull something up.
If we can pull up the one pager, not the PowerPoint slide. Actually, that is actually there.
There we go.
So, we're going to start with the graphic, if you remember, in the first study, at the end of the year one, we presented a summary of what the research said, and really what our study has focused on. It's what this graphic is here. There are really two sets of practices that have guided the study. Research really speaks to the organizational structures, the use of time, space, and personnel, and how schools leverage those to provide the learning experiences, and that's what's in the center in AWA. Our English Learner Program has consistently focused on providing that explicit English language instruction, but research also speaks to providing rigorous curriculum for our English learners as well as an inclusive climate. So it's really these two things together are what research says is best practice for serving our English learners. Down to the conclusions, our ESOL office has consistently designed services that mirror the importance the research places really on that explicit English language instruction. However, in terms of the student outcomes, as you probably recall from past data, our English learners do get a very strong foundation for when they gain English language proficiency. Their performance is very high, but while they are in the process of gaining that English language proficiency, their outcomes are not always consistently positive. Our English Learner Service Delivery Model, especially at the elementary level, our schools reported some difficulties in attaining some of those standards in terms of the use of time and personnel to provide the learning experiences. You probably recall, at the elementary level, the ESOL teachers support the classroom teachers in providing all of the explicit language instruction, the rigorous curriculum and the inclusive climate. There is not a one-to-one instructional model like courses at the middle and high school level. So the model at the elementary level is a little bit different. It's more of a supplementary model where the ESOL teachers are supporting our English learners, but they're also supporting the, the classroom teachers in serving our English learners. So the elementary struggle in particular with the use of time and personnel. The one thing we did find, as Dr. Braybrand mentioned, is there really is not any single division-level unit that research speaks to that really coordinates and supports schools in managing both the learning experiences and the organizational structures. One of the pieces that the additional time has allowed us in the past several months is going back to look at the rollout of the revised ESOL program for our high school students. In June, we really had not had the outcome data to look at the, the out, the rollout to the remaining high schools. Remember in 15, 16, it was in Stewart and Lee, and in 16, 17, it was expanded to all of the other high schools. I'm going to ask if we can go to the graph that's at the bottom right. What we did see, if you recall, at the end of the pilot year, we saw the grade nine newcomer students in Stewart and Lee had two core content credits in English and in social studies. Compared to similar students under the traditional approach, they did not have core content credit. Most often, it was PE credit. When this program was expanded in 16, 17, we wanted to look at how this played out in all of our schools, and you can see both the original pilot sites as well as the revised, the remaining high school sites. These students did get two core content credits in grade nine in both English and social studies. So the rollout was equally effective in the remaining high schools as it was in Stewart and in Lee. There were some differences, there was really actually one primary difference. Stewart and Lee received a staffing for a bilingual counselor that the remaining high schools did not get. We followed up with the remaining high schools and asked how they were able to, without the additional funding, provide this service and support for students. And all of our high schools that were similar to Stewart and Lee, all of them that had 20% of their students who are English learners, did provide this support to their, their students by creating an ESOL counselor or a counselor directly in support of our English learners. Some of them had to trade off positions, some of them reallocated positions, but they all did provide that without the additional funding. However, it meant that they ended up increasing the caseload for who they called their alphabet counselors, because the needs of our English learners are greater than the students who are English proficient. That's really what the final conclusion was about. That the, the needs of these English learners in terms of the counseling staff really are taxing the schools. Many of the schools spoke to, as the, the size of the English learner population increased, that they weren't sure how long they were going to be able to provide that support or having to scale it back to supporting the ALP 1 and ALP 2 students. In terms of the recommendations, I think Dr. Braybrand has really spoken to all of those. Just wanted me to go over those. As he hit before, basically what research says is there need to be one division-level unit that really coordinates and has a shared leadership model with the schools, providing some of that oversight and coordination of delivery of both the learning experiences and the organizational structures. The ESOL office has traditionally focused on the, the learning experiences, but also it'd be very beneficial to have some be coordinating both the learning experiences and the organizational structures. The second recommendation really speaks to exploring the concerns, particularly at the elementary level, for how do we manage the constraints of time and personnel and the master schedules, providing the support for both our English learners as well as the classroom teachers that are serving them. The third recommendation really speaks to having a set of specific expectations for schools for managing the organizational structures and learning experiences. And as you'll see in Rich Polio's Program Management Response, they've taken the opportunity and have done quite a bit of work in this area. The fourth recommendation speaks to, as we're going towards this comprehensive professional development plan, making sure that the needs of staff in these areas, not just the learning experiences, but also the organizational structures are addressed throughout that. And the fourth recommendation really speaks to the needs of the counselors concerning revising the high school-level school counselor staffing standards, so it reflects a, a weighted needs-based staffing factor for ALP Level 1 and 2 students as repurposed or new funding allows.
And so with that, we'll have an opportunity for our staff response, and Rich Polio.
All right, thank you, everyone. Could we please go back to the, I apologize, could we please go back to the PowerPoint at this time? And it would be starting at slide 26. I hope someone will tell Ms. Schultz that we numbered the slides. Oh, Ms. Schultz, you're here, great, okay, Ms. Schultz. We numbered the slides. So, slide 26, we're there. So, um, so this is each, for the next slides, I'm going to have a response to each of the recommendations. And as Marty said, I think we've been fortunate that along the, along with the last year, we've really worked closely with the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement to listen to what their recommendations are, and then look at where we needed to improve what we were doing right away almost, and, and start on that. So first of all, the first recommendation is to designate a division-level unit to oversee division-wide coordination of the delivery of all three learning experiences needed by English learners. Our office does believe that we should be that division-level unit. We provide curriculum guidance, professional development, and training for administrators and teachers. And we've developed a new English Learner Program Model, which I'll share with you in a moment to guide implementation. We do believe that this would be in certainly a collaborative effort, particularly with the regions and the region leadership and the superintendent as we move forward to guide curriculum and professional development. But we believe that we could be that division-level unit. Let's start.
I'm going to, if I could, just add a tiny bit of detail on this. I, I think we are that division-level unit, but I think one of the things that you'll see tonight is that we've worked really hard over the last, really year-plus, to develop better-written guidance for schools in terms of how to actually use the resources that they have, most importantly, the staff that they have, to make sure that the staff are providing the support to not just the students, but also to the classroom teachers that are working with English language learners at the elementary level. So that, that is a big area of focus for us as we work on professional development with general education teachers in all of the elementary schools.
So the next recommendation is about the division-level unit exploring concerns of schools related to constraints of time and personnel, and report findings to the, the superintendent. So, our recommendation is that, and we've, we've thought this for, for some time, that we think that the, it, it perhaps it's time for the leadership team to review current ESOL staffing practices, including staffing formulas, projection calculations, and mid-year enrollment fluctuations. Particularly, we know that with our English learners, we, we have many schools, middle school, elementary, middle, and high schools that in the January, February timeframe still receive a number of English learners. So, just to look at that and how we might be able to support schools in their effort to serve all their students. As, as Dr. Persidio alluded to, we have, in response to the recommendation of having specific expectations for schools, this is where we agreed that we, we do not have written guidance, up to this point, we have not had real strong written guidance for schools that established how to organize themselves, how they should be best-serving, what best practices to use with English learners, and how to support families of English learners as well. So we've developed a comprehensive program model and program standards. And just to show you real quick, if, is it possible to click on the link? If it's not working. So, this is on the intranet, and it's, so all schools can access, and essentially, it's very similar to, it, it really takes, it's very similar to the three areas that Orsi has outlined that we believe in. For example, the three areas of, that, the three areas that are part of our model are English language development, a pathway to proficiency, which means the work in the content areas, and our systems of support for English learners, because we know that they need a fair amount of social and emotional support at times, and families could use support as well. If you scroll down just a little bit on this page, you'll see all the standards. Similar to you would have standards in math or social studies or science, these are the standards that are research-based, and there are, in each standard, we won't go through it now, but certainly in each standard, there are guidelines for how, what schools should do, how they could work, and also resources for schools. So we have begun to roll this out with schools, and somewhat of a soft start to introduce what it is, the expectations are for their work with English learners. All schools are going to be at a different place, and so we're working with, with all schools beginning this year on how to best follow and meet the standards moving forward. So with that, can we go back now? Thank you very much, we just go back to the, great. Fourth is about professional development, ensuring that the division's professional development plan includes opportunities to increase school staff knowledge about English learners. And we've developed a multi-year professional development plan in our office, and we're also work closely with the Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement. Our goal is to focus on training administrators and teachers on reaching the new L-program standards, and that would include both ESOL teachers and classroom and content teachers. We've started, we have some training coming up in English language development for all ESOL teachers in the county, all 800. That will be happening over a series of days coming up and later on in November. We also have started professional development with cadres of classroom and content teachers in the hopes that we'll get to eventually all that really need it over the next couple of years, but that's going forward as well. And with administrators, I just met with regions today, actually, the region assistant superintendents, and we find that the region meetings in some ways are some of the best ways to really have face-to-face with all principals. You know, over the course of five meetings, I can see all principals, we can share with them our, our new guidelines, our new model. We've started, we've already met with two regions, we're meeting with one later this week, and we'll hit the other two shortly. So, we're excited about that. In addition, the cultural proficiency is very important work when it comes to English learners, making sure that all of our employees really take the time to get to know their students and get to know English learner families, what their strengths are and what their challenges are. So, the cultural proficiency work, as you know, a lot, you know, led by Nina Thomas, but also really led by a, a number of people throughout the division, is so important to our work with English learners, and so that work continues. And lastly, the fifth recommendation about considering revising high school-level counselor staffing. We, I talked with Jen Glazer, the Director of Counseling and College and Career Readiness. We both agree that this recommendation, we agree with this recommendation wholeheartedly. We feel like for our schools that have a higher number of Level 1 and, we do Level 1 and 2 English learners at the high school level, that additional counseling, whether it be certainly in, in repurposing and/or reallocating the staffing or funds, that, that's a tremendous help. Lee and Stewart have mentioned, I believe even at this table before, that, that has been a game changer for them, has really helped to support their students and help them achieve academically, because they're able to meet, better meet the needs of their students socially and emotionally. So. The, the next few slides are some data we had wanted to use this time for some progress monitoring. So, I will say that, so since we've, as you know, we changed almost all the courses for high school ESOL students, particularly Level 1 and 2s. So, beginning in 2014, 15, we had, and I have the numbers actually on the next slide, so I'll go to that. We had just seven students, Level 1 students, that were in classes earning English 9 and 10 credit. This past year, we had 1,386 students. We had, for all Level 1, 2, and 3 students that we did not have in, we had very few, very few were taking English for credit. We started in 2014, 15, the baseline year, with a total of 538, that's a total of the 1 through 3s. Last year, we had 3,602 students earn English 9 or 10 credit. This is going to be very helpful, I think, down the road, as students hopefully will graduate within four or, you know, five years, as opposed to staying on or dropping out for long, staying on for a long period of time or dropping out before, before they get a chance to graduate. And I know, one of the things, I don't, I don't believe it was mentioned by Orsi, but this really goes to the fact, I should mention, the return on investment that I think you'll see in the report. I believe it's on page 25 or 26 of the report, that as, if students are graduating on time, we have, and this also goes to the question of our students over age 18 that are in schools. If students are entering at age 14 and graduating by 18, that's what we want. Right now, we have students that are 19, 20, 21, who have been with us for many years, because they weren't in English 9 and 10 to start with, they were in ESOL classes. Yes, that's right, year-two report. And this is just our, our English enrollment this year. I will point out, because if you add up the percentages in the ELP Level 3 row, that's going to add up to more than 100%, it's not a mistake, it's just that many students that are Level 3 and are now in 12th grade are taking English 11 and English 12 concurrently. So it's like 101-point-something percent. In math, last two slides, in math, we added, as you know, for Level 1 and 2 students, we added a double block of math as opposed to, they were just taking one math class. And this, we feel, has been very helpful, and if you see from the data here, in the baseline year, we had 1,101 students, when you totaled our Level 1, 2, and 3 students to, on 2014, 15, that were taking algebra. So that was just 31.5% of all Level 1, 2, and 3 students. And as you'll see, that 9.8% of Level 1 students took algebra in 2014, 15. This year, we actually have 2,358 students in Levels 1, 2, and 3 that are taking algebra. We have 702, so it's gone up from 190 to 702 students in just a few years, taking algebra. We didn't tell students they had to offer algebra to students early, we weren't pushing it, like this is something you must do. Schools have looked at their students and said, okay, they're ready for algebra now, which maybe they weren't doing in the past, because, and we think the double block has really helped to prepare students for algebra quicker. And, and lastly, this is rolling up into geometry and algebra 2 as well. So you'll see, this year, we have, this year, we have 1,125 students enrolled in geometry, Levels 1 through 3. I apologize, it's not up here, but last year, we had just 435, so that's almost tripled. And in algebra 2, we had 176 last year, where this year, we have 373. The very last nugget, I apologize, is that pass rates in algebra, I want to go back, again, this is not up here. However, in the baseline year, Level 1, 2, and 3 students, 42% of those students, so enrollment is important, access is important, but hopefully, achievement follows access. In 2014, 15, 42% of students actually passed the SOL test in this group. And then in 15, 16, it went up to 48%, and last year, it was 52%. So it's gained 10 points in just two years. We're really proud of that, and hopefully, we think not only is there more access, but the teaching is getting better, students are better prepared for algebra, and hopefully, that'll continue.
And so we're finished with our presentation, and as you can see, with this unique approach, you've had an opportunity to hear what the evaluation had to say about our program, and then hear what staff, how staff implemented the recommendations. And, and from my perspective, I think it creates a more well-rounded presentation to the board, because you can actually get a better sense of how staff are using the information that we receive from our program evaluations. And so with that, we're open for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand wants to start.
I, I just want to make one comment framework, you know, when you, you had a full day at 6 o'clock. You know, when you, you had a full day at 6 o'clock. Yeah, I read from the, I read from the points and I'd seen this presentation a month ago in preparation for this work session, but now that I'm, I'm in the middle of it, I wanted to share a couple of quick nuggets. Marty already said one. We got an Office of Strategic Research and Program Improvement, and then you're getting the response. I love this format that we're starting to do to have our folks listen, take the ideas, and I'd love to start this idea of bringing you the program evaluation and then what we're doing about it to really inform future presentations like this, not just, oh, here's the problem and let you guys question on that, but even start to look at some of the solutions and give us feedback on what you think about that. The other is, I just want to underscore a couple of those one-pagers. They game-changed by putting kids into these courses, right? Rethinking out of the box, put them in the courses that are going to get course credit. And we really made significant improvement and pass rates have gone up. The other thing, just as a high school principal, but the other big nugget, we've created a model of program standards. Rich and his team have created, you've got to know what best practices are. I came in as a principal, I didn't know what all the best practices were for ESOL. Now it's in one place, we can all get on the same page, and now our PD is going to be around what those best practices are. So define what's working and then make sure we're training our people, our principals, our teachers, on knowing what those things are. So I think we're going to see continued improvement around our ELs. I know some of the other recommendations were around formulas and budget issues, which we can talk about. But just developing the model and then doing PD, strategic PD, is something as we even get into Thursday to be thinking about. Strategic professional development around the core aims of our strategic plan that this board wants to see is how we're going to get better. This is just the latest example of it.
No, I agree wholeheartedly. And when I went over staff with all of these things, I thought it was excellent, the way we had different options because we're different ways to different learners. Some people will have time to read the media reports, some people have the one-pager, and also I, the recommendations as a result of the programming and what's happened. So we will start out, we have Ms. Evans followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you very much for the details in this report. I certainly was a strong supporter of the pilot programs when they started at Stewart and Lee, and I'm glad to see the, the impact of how well they've done, particularly with the earned credits and the SOL passage rates. I did have some, some specific questions if you would go to the 64-page report, English Language Learner Study Final, and it's coming up as page 25 on mine, but it's listed as page 21 in the text, if we could call that up. It's the 62-page report, English Learner Study Final, and if you look at the page numbers up top, it says 25 of 62, but if you look at what it's, you know, on, yes, the year 2 report. It's, yes, it's, it's page 21 in, if you look at the text, it's, it's 20, it's 25 of 62 if you go up there at the top, though. Different, okay, keep going. That's, okay, keep going. There we go. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this and that we all understand this, what this is telling me. I think what this is telling me is that that first bar there is comparing the two pilot schools, the first year of the pilot with the year before the pilot at those schools. Is that what that's telling me? Okay, so at Stewart and Lee, we had two credits the year before the pilot started, and then we had 78 the first year of the pilot, is that correct?
That's the percentage of students who earned a credit in English.
But I mean percentage, yeah. So 2% went up to 78%.
Yes.
Okay. And then the 21% is at non-pilot schools, is that?
Right, so that was a matched, it was the same year as the pilot year, and it was a matched sample of students.
Okay. So that's really significant when you look at, you know, that huge increase at the two pilot schools, both compared with itself the year before, and then with, with the 21% of similar students at all other schools, correct? So, okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, make sure I was reading that right. And then, so that certainly is, is a huge difference there. And then if you go to 29, I see that the return on investment also looks to be extremely significant. I think it says 18, you know, if all goes well, 18.6 million dollars in future potential, potential savings. That assumes graduation on time, is that what that assumes? Graduation in four years?
Yeah. Yeah, so it assumes graduation on time.
Okay. So, and so what, what we're saving there is the fact that we don't have students going for a fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth year.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, that certainly is significant, too. You had referred to graduation rates in this report, and where were you referring to graduation rates? Where, do we have, I'm a little surprised we, we would have a comparison already since it's only been two full years. Is this projected?
If I mentioned graduation rates, then I think I was prospective graduation, which was talking about that this has the potential to then improve graduation rates, increase graduation rates for our English learners.
Because we don't really have that yet.
No.
So, when, because it's too soon, okay. So at the end of the day, this is kind of an overarching question, if we're going to look at, you know, how we're determining success, are we determining success by, what's our ultimate goal? Graduation rates, SOL passage, return on investment, all of the above? How are we deciding?
I think it is all of the above. I think, in fact, we've had conversations, I'll say with, with, we talk with principals all the time about this now, our high school principals. We've met, we met just last week with the Lee and Stewart administrative teams, looking at how is year 3 going, because they're in year 3, and how is year 4? And we started to look at data of how many of their students that started in the program are going to be graduating in four years next year. And so, you know, ultimately, our goal is actually not just graduation, but making sure that, sure, graduation rates will go up, and I think that is a given in many ways. Like if we do this, if we continue along this path, our graduations for English learners will increase. However, the end goal is really to make sure that those students are prepared for college or career when they graduate. So we don't just want to have them get through the courses and, and if they're still an English learner, that they're not ready for whether it be a two-year college, a four-year college, or a real career. You know, many of our English learners, unfortunately, they might graduate and they get a job, but a job is different than a career. So we really want them to have that career-oriented focus or college-oriented focus, and that's our goal. So I think the data is showing that with our programming, that we're moving along and the four-year path to graduation has basically been established. It's the harder work probably of ensuring that all of our students really have a plan for what's happening after graduation and all of our staff are prepared to help them execute that plan. So that's where we are.
And four-year graduation is, is realistic?
Yes, it definitely is. So the, what we've put in place is four years with the possibility of sliding to a fifth or sixth depending on the demographic, depending on the profile of the student, depending on the individual student.
I'm thinking of a number of our students coming in now, of course, come to us not only with no English, but other issues with the interrupted education, maybe only having one or two years of school in their home country, which is a different issue. I think.
That's right. And we would anticipate that those students are going to need obviously more support and more time. And just as a reminder, we know that the national research says for students that are developing language proficiency and starting with no skills in the target language, in this case, English, the average time to get to that proficiency level is between five to seven years. So when we have students coming to us with very limited exposure to either core academics in their home language or in English, it's going to take a little bit longer. One indicator that I wanted to just mention in addition to the high school indicators and the ones that you mentioned, is also, just as a reminder, we're looking in this report at our programs K-12. So another really important indicator for us is the amount of time that it's taking students to develop proficiency.
Oh, sure.
Their English language proficiency. And we have a state assessment that we use, it's actually a national assessment that we use called WEDA, that helps us track that and measure the growth that students are making in developing proficiency in English.
Okay. And I'll just ask one more question and make a comment because I know others have, have questions. The increase in the number of ESOL students coming in, the 63% increase in January 17 from January 16 is, you know, and we certainly saw that at Stewart High School. I know we, we had a huge influx in January, February, and March. Do we know, do we have an assessment as to why that happened and what we expect for this January, February, and March?
I don't, I don't know if I could, you know, pinpoint exactly why that happened. We do know that a number of students came to us from all over the country and also directly from outside of the country in that January to February timeframe earlier in the year. What I can say is that for September, right now, our September numbers from this year to last year, so September of 2017, we're actually down 35% from last September. So we, last September, 2000, excuse me, in 2016, September 2016, we found 1,000 students eligible for ESOL services, and this September, we found 647 students eligible for ESOL services.
Okay.
We tested last year, 1,296 in September of 2016, and this year, we tested 770. So we're down significantly.
Of course, we do know that from the, the patterns of the past, that sometimes the biggest influxes do come in the, the late winter, early spring. So it'll be interesting to see if that maintains. And the only other, the only comment I made is, is I very strongly support the increased counselors for schools with high level, levels of ELLs. I've seen the difference that it has made, and it's certainly necessary for schools who have to do much, much more, particularly with students with interrupted education, with high mobility levels, which we're going to have a conversation about separately, and students who, they, they have to actually actively go out and, and find and counsel to get them to come back. So I strongly support that recommendation. Thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you. Before I get on with my comments, I want to clarify what you just said, Mr. Polio. Last year, you had referrals of 2,096 at the beginning of the year, and this year, it's about 700 for testing?
Last year, we had 1,296 that we tested in the month of September 2016. This year, it's 770.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry if I missed. In the month of September, just in the month of September. We track month by month. So just in the month of September.
Thank you.
We compare month, yeah, here we go.
First, I want to thank you personally and your whole team for all of your hard work in this area. I think it is one of the most challenging but most important areas that we have facing our system. So thank you for all of your hard work. I appreciate especially the collaboration between the ORC organization and your organization. I do believe, like Dr. Bray Rand has suggested, that this should be the model going forward, that we drive our decision-making from sound best practices, research, testing the approach, and then making adjustments as necessary. Having said that, I do have a couple of comments and concerns. I welcome your recommendations, especially in the area of counseling. I think that your data on the socio-emotional is so important, and it also is critical that young people that are learning a new language and core subjects in our education system need to have the supports to help them through the process, but also as they make decisions for the future. So when we look at this, we should not be looking at this purely as a return on investment for the years that they are here in our school system, but a return on investment for our society. And that's a positive investment. I worry, though, that what we talk about is repurposing staffing versus adding staffing in this critical area. When you have counselors that have a workload of 300 students, their ability to know each of those students by name and need becomes more of a challenge. And so I would hope that going forward, that we look at this as being a budget priority and one that we increase over all staffing in schools where there is a high ESOL population rather than repurposing. And this leads me to another area, which is not only on the counseling, but in general with our staffing for these high-need schools. Because what happened in the schools that did not have additional staffing is that the repurposing occurred not only in counseling, but also in some of the coursework. I have constituents in my area that have expressed concern because classes were not available for them to be able to complete their higher-level coursework because they just weren't made available. And that's that constant balancing act that our principals have to go through. And so I would urge that we shouldn't always be looking at repurposing, but also making sure that we have those higher-level courses available at each one of our high schools. Along those lines, it really needs to be a, your recommendations and having your guidelines are fantastic, and I think there should be a standalone organization responsible for that. I would suggest it falls under the equity practices of Dr. Duran. But we also need to make sure that we go beyond guidelines to actually making sure that they're implemented, that we have the fidelity of implementation. Because in reading the report, it's clear that we don't have consistent delivery of the model in each of the schools. And I would say it's not unique to just ESOL, it happens in other areas as well. But as a system, we need to find a way to ensure that when we move forward on programs, that it's more than just a guideline, a couple of professional development courses, and then how do we ensure that beyond that, that it's actually happening? And then as a follow-on, just quickly, you have great data on the algebra outcomes for getting credit for them. I didn't see any 11th grade English. Did I miss that somewhere? Because isn't that the SOL year?
Right. No, you didn't see 11th grade English because this is the first year that since, so now that we're in the third year of the program at Lee and Stewart, Lee and Stewart students who have been in the program for two years are now in English 11. So, and what we've done with English 11 is that we know that, you know, English 11 is challenging, and it's a testing year for SOLs, and as Dr. Presidio said, mentioned earlier, we know that it takes time for students to develop English language proficiency, and every student is different. So we've created actually two courses for English 11. Some of our students that are, have made more advanced progression in their English language proficiency are in English 11 and are taking an English language development class as well to get them ready for either the work keys or the, and of course, SOL test. In addition, we've created another course called Academic Literacy for those students that still may be at a lower level of English language proficiency, which is giving them English 12 credit so they can take in their fourth year, English 11, as opposed to this year. So we've created a bit of a detour. This was something that principals were really concerned about two years ago even. You know, what are we going to do three years from now? And I said, I have no idea, three years from now. But we worked it out and think so far, in Lee and Stewart, it seems to be working very well. And I don't have the data in front of me, but I can certainly give that to you of how many students at Lee and Stewart are enrolled in English 11 and how many are in academic literacies. So I don't want to quote a number right now without having it in front of me, but we'll have the data on how they did and end the course at the end of the year.
That would be great if you could provide us with those numbers and then perhaps in a future Bray Rand brief, give us an update on. And then perhaps in a future Braybrand brief, give us an update on the English 11 outcomes for the end of the year for those two cohorts. And then just finally, I know that there was some budget recommendations last year done, Dr. Duran and Dr. Lockard, who's just leaving. And I just want to know whether, oh, hi, were those recommendations on how to accommodate these programs and making sure that we had the resources that were, rather than repurposing in these high-need schools, have those been taken into account in?
Those projections that we gave that were during, right after the spring break, were not about repurposing, is how much the costing would be to have a complement of this type of program in all the high schools that we saw the highest need for. So it wasn't repurposing, it was the actual cost of what it would be for those specific, was it eight schools, Rich, or seven? Whatever the number of schools.
I think it was an additional eight schools to make it a total of 10 for the additional, and we.
So, so looking at those eight additional schools with the program, what it would be in terms of the staffing and whatnot, it was the actual costs is what that was.
Okay. And so could you send those around so that we're aware of those in the next budget?
I will send them to Dr. Braybrand to put in the briefing. Does that, will that work?
That's fine. Yeah. It's perfect. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Schultz.
Thank you for the presentation. I have some questions to ask. How much time we have? Just joking. That one pager, I'm going to start with a one pager staff gave us, and I love a one pager, except that when it comes out, when I have to print that out, font size is, I don't know. It's hard for me to read.
We'll see what we can do. We changed the Braybrand briefing actually for mobile phones, and I hear that's been a success. So let's see if we can figure it out for the one pager. Thanks.
I mean, I know that English is my second language, but when it's this small, it's really, really a foreign language to me. Having said that, I'm going to go to the little grabs at the bottom on the right-hand corner. I see some numbers there, 222, 2022, and it says Core Content Credit. So when you say Core Content, would you define that for me? Core Content?
Yes, it means credits in either English, math, social studies, or science.
Okay. Okay, got it. So it's about, about two, meaning that about 50% of what they are otherwise supposed to get.
In terms of core content, yes, and I think, Mr. Polio.
But they pick up credits from like a PE and maybe elective.
They will be taking other classes as well, elective classes, and getting other elective credits. We were focusing on the core content that they hadn't been getting previously and whether the program was supporting.
Would you be able to tell us right off your head whether students in ERP, Level 1 to Level 3, they are generally obtaining credits in other electives, while they are having difficulties? Or because they also have to take ESOL, they lose an opportunity to take those electives and not get credits?
Sure. No, I could, I could explain that. So in the first year of the program, I think what you're seeing is the two, the two credits that students are earning are one in English and one in social studies. Because we've started that first year, we've introduced government as the social studies class for Level 1 and 2 students in that first year of the programming. And then, so students are also taking English language development, which gets them elective credit. They're taking math, excuse me, a world language credit. English language development gets them a one-world language credit. And then they take, they could take individual math, like, which is, would be a pre-algebra, so that would be an elective credit. If they're in algebra and they pass algebra, of course, they would get a math credit. And then they're able to take either PE or other electives of their choice, and we find they're being successful in those. So those are elective. These are just the standard credits toward graduation that students are earning.
When you say standard credits, those other elects, they're not standard credits?
Well, we define elective credit, electives give elective credit, standards give standard credit. You need 22 standard credits to graduate. And so that's the important distinction between a standard credit and an elective credit.
But when you take English.
Or you need a total of 22 credits, excuse me, not 22 standard credits.
Thank you.
But you need, there are differences between the credit standard elective. I apologize. My elementary principal days are coming out in me. I apologize.
I think I understand what you meant to say. Now, I'm going to go to, since you mentioned about government class, starting with someone who's taking English 9 at the same time, is that, do I assume that the level of English being used in the government class might be somewhat easier than otherwise? Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yes. So the government for English learners class is the same exact standards that government, that students perhaps in 12th grade are taking. So they're learning those standards, but they are learning them by using reading, writing, listening, and speaking. That adds at a level for Level 1 or Level 2 students. So there's lots of scaffolding, there's lots of visuals, there's, lessons have been changed so that students can be, so everything's more comprehensible for students. Singing, perhaps, if you walk into the Lee, Lee government classes, lots of music going on. So I think it's definitely, it is the same standards of government, just like English 9 is the same standards for English at a level that students can understand.
I mean, that reminds me of the days when I first came over and I was the only student in my world history class allowed to use a different textbook, easier reading, maybe that's a similar concept, and still be able to get my credit. But now whether you think the same concept can be replicated in order, whether it's electives or standard classes, science, biology, chemistry, physics?
Yes, so that we believe the same. And as students gain proficiency, so we used government was, you know, quite strategic in that, first of all, if you have students that are coming from 8th grade into 9th grade and still Level 1 or 2, they've just come out of civics class, so they have a little bit of background in that. Secondly, it's not, there's not an SOL course tied to it, so we decided that that would be a good place to start. In biology, physics, chemistry, as students gain proficiency, yes, we can teach those with the same scaffolded techniques, and we see on the SOL tests how they do, but we have other ways to support them as they gain. We specifically, though, not added biology, for example, right off the bat for our Level 1 students. Some Level 1 students may take it, and we have scaffolds and other ways of teaching that to students. Hopefully, they can be successful.
Maybe this question maybe should go to State Board of Education or General Assembly, but I'm going to ask you as our staff person, your opinion on this one. You mentioned about SOL test, Standards of Learning Test. You think for, you know, students who are English language learners, who are not proficient in the English language yet, that maybe different format of the test for those Standards of Learning tests is appropriate? Same standard, same concepts, but maybe easier words to use, simpler?
Well, we have like, we do have, for example, the Plain English, and that comes for algebra. We still have the Plain English test where the language is simpler. So certainly, if we could have a simpler language, if there could be certain courses, for example, where they might go to, this would be a lot of work, but you know, portfolio type of assessment, things like that, different varied assessments is certainly, I think, we're looking at for all of our grade levels and all of our students, not just English learners. So yes, I think that would be a great idea.
Just, just want to add on to Rich's comment. We actually did submit some policy requests to the State Board of Education and the State Department of Education, and one of the requests pertain not just to English language learners, but to be able to use more performance-based assessments where you could actually use student work samples in lieu of a multiple-choice test.
Okay, maybe again, again, this may be the state issue, but, and also policy issue from the state lever, but, you know, keeping a particular student because of, it takes, as we know, generally six, seven, eight years for someone to, you know, start learning English and become proficient to be able to continue doing post-secondary education, that whether you want to keep the students in high school for six, seven, eight years versus less students after reaching a certain level, graduate, maybe permit the students to continue sharpening language skills in the community college level rather than in high school. You know, student is obviously, could be 19, 20, 21, older than regular older students in high school. And, and, you know, some of those students, or many of those students, might not really be focusing on some of those classes, subjects that are required for them to get the credits on, but they may be focusing on maybe could be engineering, could be some other, you know, computer skills as opposed to US history, world history in greater depth. Maybe that, again, the question maybe should go to a State Board of Education. And if, you know, staff could share, maybe we should find an opportunity for talk about this, whether as we make some advocacy with our General Assembly, that was something for General Assembly and State Board of Education to consider. Because I, I mean, my own experience, own experience, it has certainly, even though I went to high school for three years here, I know that, you know, for me to be able to compete against my peers in college, that three years was not enough, but I didn't want to stay in high school beyond those three years. I was older than my classmates. I was almost two years older than my classmates. There was no way I wanted to stay more than that. But other than language itself, I was able to compete against my peers. But it just takes the time, and we don't need to hold those students back in high school.
If I could just add on to Mr. Moon's comment, I think it would be really important to continue our advocacy with the state on this particular issue because we have so many of the English language learners in Fairfax, and there are a lot of places in the state that are not necessarily familiar with some of the challenges that these students face. And Mr. Moon is 100% correct that as, as students are older in high school, if they're not able to have a pathway out of high school to their next step, we know what happens. They drop out of school and they don't continue their education, and that obviously limits what they're able to do financially and economically. So I think that there's a lot of importance for us to continue our advocacy on this particular issue. So thank you for raising that.
Thank you. I have other questions, but I'll probably submit those questions in writing.
Before I forget, though, because I just want to add on, it's to Mr. Moon's comment. You were saying we have policy currently. Can you forward that to us, like what we're, what we're advocating at the state level, what the language is? Is Mr. Malloy doing that on our behalf? Because I, I haven't seen that or I'm not recalling it.
Yeah, we definitely would be happy. We can put that in a Braybrand briefing.
Okay. Let's put that in a Braybrand briefing or as a next step to make sure we get that. All right. We have Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Okay. I'm going to try to drive a bunch of my comments to, to data. First of all, I want to thank staff because this is a better data-centric report than I've seen in the past, but I'm, I have some pretty significant nitnoids with some of the information here. So I'm going to ask some pretty specific questions. There was a suggestion that we have somebody, a division-level unit. I have three very simple what, who, and how much. What is, what is that? Who is it going to be and how much is it going to cost?
Let me just respond briefly to that. I, I think we already have the unit itself, and I really do think it's the Office of ESOL Services. I think what the recommendation, at least in my interpretation of the recommendation, calls out is that we need to have more clarity of authority for that particular office to not just provide program guidance. That was something that we needed to do a better job of providing that program guidance. But then what is the next step around providing the training and the support necessary for schools to implement that guidance? And then who are the individuals that are going to be responsible for the monitoring?
And then connecting that to what's on 20, on page 25 is, in terms of putting the responsibility of the cost and measuring what's the return on investment, is that what you imagine is sort of a responsibility of that role at a quote-unquote division level?
I think so, yes. I mean, I think we, we probably need to unpack everything that's on slide 25 and talk about that a little bit more. But I, I just, I just wanted to make the point that I think, I don't think that there's huge expenses in developing a new unit. I think that we had that.
That's great.
I think it's clarity of expectation.
That's excellent news. That should have been, that should have been your last leader. So, and before I get into some of the other things, the other question is, is that I've spent a lot of time talking to actually ESOL teachers, particularly in Spanish and Arabic languages, and they're very frustrated because they feel like we, and I don't know, I don't know what the mechanism is, that students pass the SOL, but they can't pass the WEDA. And they get held back over and over again, taking the WEDA, trying to pass the WEDA, even though they've passed the SOL. What is the dichotomy between the, the SOL and the WEDA, and how do we reconcile that?
Well, I think, you know, the SOL tests, what they learn during the year, a particular subject area, they may be getting accommodations at, for the SOL tests. So if they're able to show, to demonstrate proficiency on that content area, they could still be, for example, a Level 3 student, a Level 4 student, and they're still receiving ESOL services. But they're actually functioning at a very high level. So they're able to understand, they're able to understand what they read, they still qualify for. For example, you could pass an SOL, you get the read-aloud accommodation as an, as an ESOL student, no matter, even if you're Level 4, and this year, even if you're Level 6A or 6B. So you could pass your SOL and still be specifically learning English.
So the dichotomy is that there aren't any accommodations allowed on the WEDA, is what you're saying?
Well, you're right. The WEDA is to, to show, well, I wouldn't put it that way necessarily with accommodations, but the WEDA is not a test of what has been learned during the year. The WEDA is just a, kind of a dipstick, I guess, each year of reading, writing, listening, and speaking, and how you're developing that.
What I hear in terms of the access of students to later, later academic rigor is this hurdle of not passing the WEDA. And so I'm just wondering, and we don't have to debate this tonight, I'm just saying that there's, there's something amiss, and there is a frustration level in educators who feel like they're working with these students, they're passing the SOLs, and that they're, that this, you know, this sort of, I don't know if it even is considered high stakes, but this barrier test of the WEDA in presenting, preventing them from, from moving on. Okay, so now I'm going to.
I'll think about it, and we can talk later. It's okay.
You have, you have to come up to the microphone. Sorry. So Karen's coming up. Karen is one of our coordinators of ESOL Services.
The WEDA was a barrier test under our old programming. We would hold students into classes based on their English language proficiency level. That is no longer the case with the new programming. They are able to progress through the content courses regardless of their English language proficiency level under the new program design.
Great. That's a second loss leader. Win-win.
There you go.
Winner winner, chicken dinner. We're not going to get, we're not going to get there with the next one.
Thank you, Karen.
So, so I, I have a problem a little bit with, and this is in deference to, and don't think that anybody was trying to, but when I hear things like, I've seen the difference in additional counseling provided to teachers, or with all due deference to my colleague, Mr. Moon, his high school relevance to what's happening in today's high school is not necessarily, you know, a corollary. And when I look at the, the program budgets and that we've passed since, let's take 2014, we've had a 22.51% increase in the cost of ESOL services. At the same time, we had a 8.76% reduction in the number of students. And so the question is, and that's, that doesn't even take into account the, the additional cost per program that we just had up here on the pilot. So the question to me is, if we're at, and, and I have, and if you could bring up page 25 of the Year 2 report, the second paragraph where it starts, "Based on Fiscal 16 Program Budget Book," and, sorry, they're going to get there. Takes longer for them to click. I already wrote it down. That there is an $88.4 million operating budget for ESOL. That's, that does not reflect our, our budget as we passed it. The Fiscal 16 budget had a cost per ESOL student of 3307. It's a little bit further down. It's right below there, right below the cost, if you slide down that page. Just a little bit further, just a little bit further. There you go. There you go. So thirty-three oh seven per student, thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifteen students served, that's a hundred and sixteen million and a half, four fifty-six oh oh five. For fiscal seventeen at thirty-seven forty-five per student, at thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-eight students served, that's a hundred and twenty-one million three hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and ten dollars. And then you layer on top of that, um, the pilot programs. So now you're getting to, you know, somewhere around, you know, fifty-three hundred or more per student, um, depending upon which programs they're receiving. And then a little further down that, that paragraph, it says, um, the direct cost per pupil calculated for fiscal seventeen was three thousand thirty dollars. Our, our fiscal seventeen budget was passed at thirty-seven forty-five. So either we're saving a lot of money, um, from our, what we're reporting and what we're advertising in our budget and what we pass as a budget, but there's a huge disparity. And when you're talking seven hundred dollars per student and you're talking thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-eight students, that's a lot of money. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, one, why this doesn't reflect what our budget reflects? And if there's a difference, it should say it. And then second of all, we, where is the sort of, uh, we can't go off of anymore the, the notional understanding that, well, it feels good that we're providing more counseling. What the, 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 the net result of how much money we attribute and what's the outcome for the students? We can't say that, um, and Dr. Persidio, I think you said that, um, the students are able to achieve academically, socially, emotionally better. Says what? What, what is it that we're measuring that says, look, if we're going to commit, you know, a hundred and twenty million dollars of our budget to leveraging, um, English language acquisition by students? There, this is a lot here, but where's, what is the expectation of this board? That, that there is an acquisition of language that, that given a certain, you know, what's the student growth progression? You know, and every student's coming with a different set of circumstances, but given a student, you know, some English, no English, no, no, not literate or numerate in their own language, is there, is there an expectation in which we're going to say, that you're looking for to say, this is reasonable? Because right above that, you say, um, that in the, in the summary of findings, if you could slide back down a little bit, that although FCPS's average ESOL costs, three thousand three hundred and seven dollars in fiscal two thousand sixteen, were more than those of other school divisions' costs for similar services. There's a big, what was that? How much more? Why? Are there more, is there a greater outcome? Are we just spending more for spending more? I mean, there's a lot, it's like what's in between, it's what's not said? And then trying to reconcile what's here with what we've actually advertised in our budget. So I know that's a lot, but this is something I've spent a lot of time on. And, and if we're going to spend the money, we've got to be able to understand what the nexus is between spending the money and actual achievement, actual, uh, acquisition of language.
So just a few things because you're right, that, that's a lot of great analysis that will take a lot of time to, to discuss in more detail. So we would be happy to meet with any board members outside of the, um, meeting tonight to, to dig into this a little bit more. And you were also right that we didn't bury the lead on this one, right? There's a lot of stuff there, so it's, it's going to take more time to unpack. A few things that I would just say, just very thirty thousand foot things to understand. First of all, we do need to start to dig into a little bit more, some of the return on investment. And this is just really preliminary information that's listed here. Um, and we tried to provide particularly on the slides, some of that outcome data that we believe as a result of some of the investments. Um, and I, I think the investments actually, um, you know, were quite small in comparison to the outcomes that we're already seeing. So for example, when we provided the information on the slides with respect to the number of credits that students are earning, the percentage of students that are earning credits, um, at the high school level, there was very little additional staffing that was provided to schools to cause that to happen. So, go ahead.
But is that even in, in terms of a best practice or, or a standard of measurement? Is the number of credits earned the, the, the measuring stick against which other divisions? See, the, if you could just, if you could just slide down just like a hair or more, you know, no, I'm down. The, this, this summary of findings, although FCPS's average ESOL costs were more than other school division costs for similar services, stop. Why was it more? Was there more academic, uh, a success with our students than theirs? Did they have more than, more academic, uh, and student growth progression than, than we did with less money? You, that's, you know, at that point, I'm driving off the cliff because I don't understand what the, what, what the comparison is. I don't understand what the measuring stick is. I don't know, understand what their achievement versus our student achievement was. And so thi- this is where sort of the analysis on the net, on the staff side to help us understand, look, when we go to put together this budget, there has to be some correlation between the expectation of, and, and it, we use the return term, return on investment just because it's, you know, it's a, it's a phrase that we can use, but a correlation between the, um, investment that we're putting in and, I mean, we could spend twice as much and get more, more, um, more, more student achievement. At, at what point are we, are we investing money and, and expecting an outcome that there is a, a place at which we have to have a discussion amongst ourselves? Are we doing the right thing and are we benchmarking against anyone else or are we just?
Right. And, and those are great questions and I want to, um, let the ORC team weigh in on that because obviously they're the ones who drafted the report and calculated the numbers that way. I was just trying to say at a very high level, um, an answer to some of the questions about how are we defining success for our students? I think particularly at the high school level, we have to look at things like accelerating credit accumulation because that is how students obviously are going to be able to earn a diploma. Things like accelerating the rate at which students develop English language proficiency because that allows them obviously to continue on the, you know, the path to graduation. So there's a lot of those outcome measures that are embedded in here that are really critical for us to look at. The financial analysis piece, obviously I want to defer to the ORC team on that.
The particular summary statement that you were just referring to is intended as descriptive information. So we looked at similar school divisions just in terms of the design of the program. We were not holding constant the outcome. So we were just looking at how are we benchmarking in terms of other similar programs in terms of cost? So that's really what this was intended to. When it came to the return on investment, that's when we were benchmarking against ourselves. It is, as you referred to earlier, challenging to find a school division using the same outcome measures that has similar sizes of English learners to be able to hold both the design of the program, costs and outcome measures. So given that we're in Virginia and we have the majority of English learners, we couldn't benchmark against another Virginia school division. So this was intended as simply descriptive information so you could understand how our costs relate to other school divisions of somewhat similar size with not a bilingual program. So a lot of programs for Miami Dade or some of the other comparable size school divisions offer a bilingual program. And there are other cost efficiencies with programs of that type. So we didn't want to bu- benchmark against those types of costs.
But that becomes crucial because when you understand that, you know, we've grown the cost at twenty-two and a half percent per student in just four years, but we have a declining student population. The big, the umbrella discussion coming in is, look, our ESOL population is going down. And I'm going to take this point to, uh, piggyback on something that Ms. Evans was emphasizing that there's this big, um, pinnacle in January, February. January, February is the pinnacle of our student membership period. All student membership reaches its pinnacle in January or February. So the fact that there's ESOL student population pinnacle in January, February is, that, that, that's a corollary to, that's, that's when we reach our zenith, um, in, in an academic year. Well, it's, but what I'm saying is it doesn't matter. Our, our general population increases. That's where we hit our pinnacle in any academic year. So that, so, so it wouldn't be surprising that, you know, any subgroup within our student population would grow. So if, if, if we, if we are experiencing a downturn in our overall ESOL population, but our costs are going up, there's a, the individual to whom we're delivering services is becoming more complicated. Um, uh, it, it's, it's more of a student with, you know, not literacy or numeracy in their own language, um, with, um, either no schooling or heavily interrupted schooling, older, uh, students. And so the nature of the type of ESOL services that we've provided in the past fundamentally has to change. The question is, at what point are we going to have a discussion about how to capitalize on efficiencies? And if other school divisions are doing something differently than we're doing? And maybe the path that we're on of creating, you know, a newcomer school or school within a school is the way forward, but it's not sustainable at a rate of, you know, four or five or six thousand additional dollars per student per year. And that's where I think we have to go, okay, how do we, where, where is it that we drive the maximum efficiency of what we're doing for students? And do, and are there more program changes that have to happen to help provide those services earlier, faster, more intensively than we're currently providing such that there, we help them acquire these skills? You know, is it year-round schooling? Do we need to provide, you know, lo- look, let's not have any interruption at all to, to the extent possible so that we can maintain, um, acquisition of language? You know, what are those additional suggestions from staff to help, you know, um, launch these students more successfully, um, instead of, you know, any languishing over summer or over time?
Actually, if you go to finding twelve, uh, when we were talking about the average cost per English learner was higher in FCPS in comparison to, uh, school divisions. So part of what we looked at, the, the last part of it, which can be attributed to FCPS's use of only certified teachers to instruct, um, English learners. And the complimentary recommendation was to really look at how we're using time and personnel. Part of what we were looking at when we were looking at some of these comparable school divisions is they staff differently. We do not use paraprofessionals consistently and other school divisions saw some cost savings by using, uh, paraprofessionals in classrooms under supervision of the classroom teacher. When it is just the ESOL teacher, that person needs to be a certified ESOL teacher. But some other school divisions use paraprofessionals and that was really the recommendation to staff to really explore some alternatives to time and personnel that other school divisions may have already explored. And perhaps there are some cost savings, cost efficiencies, ways to be able to provide more support to classroom teachers without having to always hire certified ESOL teachers.
I'm happy to take, um, the rest of this offline. The only other question, uh, only other observation I would have is, um, the couple of the tables that we're talking about on the presentation part, um, where you were doing the comparison of the WIDA levels and you were talking about, well, maybe they're in eleven and twelve. If there's a footnote like that to a table, I would put it on the table instead of just telling us because this, this is published and somebody, people will add and they will say, well, FCPS can't do math because this, this column adds to a hundred and three or whatever. So I would just, I would embed footnotes directly on tables, um, if there's an explanation that's needed because we're not going to remember, you know, going back and looking at this later. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Ms. Strauss followed by Ms. Heinz.
First of all, thank you very much. I very much appreciate, um, the format, all of the various one-pagers, five-pagers, sixty-five pagers, uh, tremendous amount of information. I also like the way that staff was able to respond to, um, uh, this study itself. So this is, this is one of the best pieces of work, professional work that I think I've seen a long time. So very, very well done. Um, and again, trying to help students, trying to give them enough time to, to get their language skills, be proficient enough and yet being able to acquire the critical content while they're still learning English. So I can see, for example, giving them English twelve before they have to take the English eleven as well. Um, we really are, are, we've turned upside down some of the sequencing of how we help the kids, give them a little more time to learn their English and yet satisfy their, the, the credits in concept, even if it's with, as Mr. Moon said, an easier form of, of English. So I think it's, it's, um, it's masterful. I'm glad we've done this. The, as we look at, at our WIDA levels and, um, knowing that we have such a large population of, of young people and probably a larger population of young people who come at an older age, um, when we are looking at data and trying to determine how well and how successful the program is, do we disaggregate the folks who come, let's say at seventeen with no prior education? In other words, because that, that's, that's a whole different challenge for those young people. Um, very different than somebody who came at age fourteen and had some, uh, prior education had maybe made it all the way through elementary school. So do we disaggregate that or do we simply look at the WIDA levels? Cause I, I don't, I'm never quite sure if the WIDA levels correspond to the actual, the rest of the significant needs of the students that we're trying to, um, address.
Yeah, well, we don't have it, I don't, we don't have it published here.
Right.
We have started to look at, at students particularly that have arrived at age seventeen.
Right.
To ensure, we have our, uh, English learner, family partnership specialist, um, uh, someone who is at Dunloaring during registration, who really works with, um, students and their families to ensure, uh, the best placement for them and make sure that, uh, what their pathway to graduation is on their route to, uh, to graduation, that they'll graduate in four years. And she really works with the students who are, excuse me, eighteen, nineteen and twenty that might, um, arrive. Um, but seventeen-year-olds for sure, um, we're beginning to track, um, their progression toward graduation, their credit accumulation and, and all the SOLs. But most importantly, we do look at, we do look at that WIDA level, um, levels one, two, three, four, um, to see for pass rates on SOLs, for example. It's a, obviously there's going to be a higher correlation of students that, um, pass SOLs at level four than say level one if they took an SOL.
Exactly. But I guess what I'm saying is that when, when we evaluate the success of our programs, I think separating out the young people who have had, you know, some education or even significant education, even if they come in WIDA level one, and even if they're on free reduced meals, but have had an education before they came here, that makes a huge difference in our ability to graduate them, um, on time or almost on time than, you know, holding ourselves accountable to the same yardstick. Um, because I think it's, it, I, I don't think you can compare the two.
We have, we have started to, I think I, I might've mentioned this at a previous work session, but we have, um, when students come in with, uh, two or more years of interrupted formal education, we now have them coded in CIST with an SF code, which stands for CIF.
The CIF, right.
As opposed to, um, SB, which is school-based. So that way we are tracking to see how we can look to see how that subset of students are doing, um, in comparison to other groups and-
Right, that's very helpful.
What additional things we need to do to help those students be successful.
And I think it would be good for us to be able to see that. I think it's just, it, it just adds the, the, a realistic view of what our, our teachers and principals are actually experiencing.
We can do that.
Yeah, okay. Um, the other question that I have in, in the recommendation that all of this, uh, that one department, one group of folks are responsible for the implementation and the oversight of all of this, what was missing before? What wasn't in the ESOL office? Certainly that's an excellent, uh, recommendation, but I guess I needed to know, so what was it like before? What were we missing here?
Um, one of the examples I'd share is Rich's staff has always done a masterful job when schools have come to him, for example, for assistance with the master schedule. But Rich's group has not had the authority to go out to the schools and say, you really should consider this and provide some of that guidance with the regions and with school administration. And what we're recommending is that his, that this division level unit have authority not, not to wait until they're approached, but to push out that best practice and to ensure that everyone is aware and has encouragement through a shared leadership model to follow best practice and the expertise his staff has to offer.
Who was, you, on, on the old model, who was it that went into the schools and said, you need help? So who was, on the old model, who was it that went into the schools and said, you need help? Was it the RASs and they had to go out by themselves or?
Okay, so you hired me for truth and I'm going to just tell you, the truth is, we haven't had a model for a while that, we haven't had a model for a while that has been laser-focused on the accountability and outcomes piece the way we want it. And we need to just be honest and say that. We've had areas, we've had clusters, now we've had regions. Since the areas, you had eight clusters with two people and a secretary, now you have five regions. The monitoring of all those schools for those people is impossible. What we have to have and what we've already created, like Project Momentum, is a team that works with the regions, they communicate with them and say, what do we need to do? And it was around accreditation. We need to take that same model and apply it, right? We already have the answer. The good news is we have the answer and apply it just for different things. ESOL, best, and guess what? We've just created a model and we're going to do PD. The culture change we're going to make, Ms. Strauss, is having our departments lean in as school-centric school system. The departments have produced amazing stuff for years, always. But they need to lean in and then work together with the regions to properly support and monitor, though the ultimate accountability has to be done by the region for the school leadership. But the ability to monitor, to collect data, to drill down and go, ooh, at four schools, 17-year-olds are really having success, even with interrupted education. At four other schools, similar demographics, mm, not so much. That's where we can get tighter and that's where I think we're going to get tighter, honestly, as we move forward. We're accelerating joint visits between departments and RAS that are starting to look at issues that we see in the organization that we want to help problem solve. And I think we relied on the leadership of the school to get done what the departments had created. And we probably put too much on the shoulders. And I'll be honest, I was a high school principal. I took, I was one course short of being ESOL certified. Could I have told you time, staffing, and personnel to create the best ESOL program for Fairfax High? I could not have, right? What did I do? Honestly, what Scott did, I called Teddy Paderas because I'd been in the system a long time. If you didn't know Teddy Paderas, you didn't call her, right? So if Teddy told you good things, you listened to Teddy and then you did it in the school. Now we've got to get more systematic. Here's the model, here's the PD, and then what's the monitoring look like? And we'll report back to you, which informs what you're going to do on Thursday. What are the key things this board wants to see from the division? What's the measuring stick? And what's the ROI, which is what another board member was mentioning? I think frankly, all the ingredients are here. Things like Project Momentum are already examples of us recreating sort of that accountability within it. But it's blending the department role and the RAS role that really left the building when we went away from the areas. The areas in the old days, the negative, I know you know, Ms. Strauss.
I was just going to say.
And I know I don't want to take too long, but
Coming around.
The areas had all the support people underneath them to drive both support and accountability and it was all in one office. What we did after we got away from the areas is we moved accountability and monitoring over here, but we really shrunk who was capable or who was charged with doing it. That's that language that you hear them going, who's in charge? And then we had the departments. They really became too siloed and we've really got to create joint, side-by-side accountability between our regions and our departments. And I believe we're already in, having robust discussions and we're already really setting up ways that that's going to happen far more than it did before. I'm happy to see that board members already feel like they're seeing differences in the way the presentations are being laid out. I think you're going to see more of that in the weeks and months ahead. And I think the work to lean in more is, has already started and will continue.
Great, thank you. That was my observation, we're sort of going back to a model we had 30 years ago. But I'm delighted because this makes great sense because we do have a great deal of knowledge and expertise on what works, what is successful in the classroom. And being in a concentrated way to, as Scott says, lean in, I think will make a huge difference. And we certainly know that the needs of our kids has grown so and has grown in a way that not everybody understands what to do. So thank you for that recommendation and I think, and you're right, Project Momentum has just been stellar. So we look forward to this and I think you're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss, and thank you, Dr. Brabran, for those comments. Much appreciated. Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara.
But just to follow up on that, it's recommendation four, right? Which is to have a single, you know, division-level entity. I think you're not saying that you're going to create another entity, you're just saying you're going to change its work. Okay, so, and if you liken it to Project Momentum, I think this, this gets connected, as you were saying, with professional development because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think one of the things that has been the difference-maker with Project Momentum is that that professional development has been embedded in the schools, that they're not sitting in central office creating, they're in the schools teaching. And maybe everybody tries to do that. But I feel like that's been something about Project Momentum that's worked, if I'm correct?
There's also a lot of great stuff that actually has been done in the departments with school support. And now it's just making sure everybody has the support necessary to actually use those tools. I was just in classrooms on Friday, work that Sloan and his folks did in science. Oh my God, the pacing guide, the revised pacing guide for elementary science will blow you away. And I got to see it going on and Sloan's folks said, oh yeah, we've been in that school. We've got to move our model. We've been in that school and now we've had leadership see that it is happening. Check what other schools need support to fully implement. And that's part of the strategic plan work we're going to do on Thursday. One thing I just want to say, because I know how this is and people are listening, I'm not talking about major reorganizational structuring. I'm talking about permission to collaboratively problem-solve, to collaboratively support, to collaboratively monitor and have joint accountability for what goes on. And I think just that permission to lean in together is a big part of how we're going to be able to move from where we are to where we want to go.
Yeah, I agree. I think the most powerful work is when people on the front lines are working with the people in central office, right? So that makes sense to me, right? The other, only other question I had gets back again to cost per pupil. And I think that's a takeaway that a lot of people may have, is they'll look at this report, if they pull one thing out, it's that we're spending too much per kid on ESOL. We're spending more than anybody else. And so, and I really appreciate that we're trying to do the ROI stuff, you know? I think it's kind of courageous, you know, to try to do that. I think our community probably appreciates it. On the other hand, I think also it's really tough in education because it's, you know, there's so many variables that we don't control, you know, that you can't, you can't change, you can't hold constant, that sort of thing. So at the end of the day, I think an ROI is always going to be somewhat soft. It's going to be our best estimate, right? And that makes sense to me. But so then that, you know, you asked the question, and maybe you don't want to signal this yet, Dr. Brabran, but are you thinking of any recommendations for the next budget year? For example, to start to replace some of our certified teachers with instructional assistants? And the only, the concern, there are probably many concerns about, with that. One of them that I have just right, kind of in my own mind, is I would assume that an instructional assistant would have to be supervised by a certified teacher. And so kind of what you're doing is you're expanding the caseload for the certified teacher by doing that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not at that place yet to have anything and I would look very carefully before we changed our instructional paradigm. I do respect what some board members said and I don't have everybody here today to check what we put in our budget documents and what we put then in our program documents. We've got to do the work of just rechecking and cross-referencing because that's the accountability, transparency, integrity that board members and community members want. And sometimes what the budget is and then what the actual is can differ. But we'll get tighter on that too. I'm comfortable that we're going to get tighter on that. One of the hardest things is something we said, we're a unique, we're an outlier for this. And our highest cost, you correct me if I'm wrong, are higher costs and we'd already shared that in our earlier ones, at middle and higher. Elementary is pretty efficient. But when you get kids with interrupted schooling, they're 17, 18, I mean, wow. It's like, that's the ER of education, right? American education, that's the ER. And we just have more of those kids that come in through the ER than practically anywhere else. So I want to get to the cost issue of it. The good news is I think we've got the right service delivery model and the right support now for our schools. And then we've really got to take this cost issue back and see if we can streamline some things or repurpose some staffing that we do have or some resources that we do have that can more effectively support the schools that are still struggling.
Okay, thank you. I would just close with, you know, the budget is a huge document and there are details that sometimes get lost. And I would just ask that if you do end up recommending changes in ESOL staffing as a budget matter, that I would just like the board to be signaled on that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Ms. Keys-Gamara, followed by Ms. Pachek.
First of all, thank you for some of the changes. I've worked with the ESOL population for a number of years and have been concerned about, you know, kind of a dual system. And so I think that some of the things that I heard today actually address concerns that I've had for a long time. So I'm grateful for that. I just want to piggyback on some of the comments that I heard because I think, what I think I'm hearing is there's varying levels of needs with, even within ESOL that may not be identified in what we're reading today. So I don't know if, as we go forward, if we had a further breakdown of, you know, I don't know how you might label it, maybe high-risk, level 1, level 2, you know, because the needs of an unaccompanied minor, particularly at a young age, are going to be very different than someone coming with a family at 16 years old or who has had an education. And so we need to, I think I would like to know what those varying needs are because then I think that might help me to identify that or to even justify the costs that are associated with serving that particular child.
All right, Dahlia.
Thank you, appreciate the report. Just one additional question, I guess I'm not sure who this is for, but thinking about state advocacy and if we are really looking at a model that's a little bit similar to Project Momentum. I know because we were able to prove that we were effective and had a model that worked, we now are the only district correct that can do this internal audit work. So I'm wondering, are we looking at being able to create these alternate assessments? Can we do that for our ESOL students to say, you know, okay, you don't believe us yet that we don't have to rely so much on standardized tests? But here are some assessments that we believe, and this is how we work with students to ensure that they are ready to graduate and to pass these state norms.
Sloan or Francisco, you're going to have to help me on this one. Did ESA allow for alternative assessments for ELL, the new revised, right? Isn't that part of the issue that the federal government did not allow? That was a debate in Congress, they're not allowed with that. What we've been asking for, for example, is time, the variable of time. Like having, for science in elementary, the additional semesters like we have for English before a kid has to sit and take an elementary science test that's high in vocabulary. Can you just speak a little bit to that? I don't know if I'm off and if I am, I want to be corrected.
Well, the ESA plan is not approved yet in terms of what our proposal was, but there is a provision potential, and that's why I want to say potential, that not it's an alternative assessment, but that the WEDA results, if there's progress on them, could count for progress in terms of on an SOL result. So that's the question. It's not that they would take a different assessment, they would have to take the SOL and since they are required to take the WEDA assessment, that if there was a progress, and that progress is what's being, you know, worked out in terms of the details, I don't have them on top of my head. But if there was progress made on the WEDA in terms of growth, then that could count.
Francisco, was that the, was that state asking the federal, the US Department of Education?
Yeah, that's in our plan that was submitted.
So that is in the plan Virginia has submitted? So if we get the go-ahead for that and we don't know the review time yet, everybody's wondering how long it's going to take. It's taken US DOE a little bit longer on the first batch. So, but we were asking for that very piece.
And not to, not to confuse this even more, but there's a difference between what we're required to do for federal accountability and what we're required to do for state accountability. So really, what we were speaking to is what we're going to be required as a state to do for federal accountability. And then the question for graduation purposes, back to Mr. Moon's line of inquiry, is what additional flexibility could we get to allow students to graduate within the state? Because the state controls the accountability system for that.
Right, and I guess that's a little more, my question is, my understanding is the state did not approve alternative assessments across the board, right? Well, so not the state, but the SOL reform, or is this different from the?
It is a little different. And the SO innovation committee, I think that's what you're asking about, I serve on, there, our proposal was to have performance-based assessments in science at the elementary and middle school in lieu of a standardized multiple-choice assessment. That was our recommendation. And then secondly, that in the traditional SOL assessment, that there would be accountability around growth measures as opposed to whether it's simply pass, fail, or pass-advance. Those two recommendations did not move forward from our committee.
Okay, and I guess my question then, but related to that, is what specifically are we saying? And, or Dr. Presidio, when you do talk about the ability to have flexibility in the types of assessments, but what specifically, which assessments are we talking about?
So we will provide in the Brabran briefing the information that we shared with the Board of Ed and the Department of Ed, and it's wide-ranging in scope. There are a number of accommodations that we request with respect to English language learners. Then there are a number of accommodations that we propose with respect to all students. One of the things that we would really hope to do though, again, is getting back to the use of more performance-based assessments for state accountability purposes, the things that the state can actually control. We know that there's going to be limitations with what the state can do for federal accountability. But to have more opportunities for students to actually demonstrate what they can do in an alternative form other than a multiple-choice test. That's one of the things that's cutting across our advocacy. And then one of the other things that I thought Mr. Moon mentioned that we need to continue to do is continue to educate the state on the needs for supporting our English learners at the high school level to look at alternative pathways to diplomas.
Right, and I
And that's a continuing, emerging issue in the state.
Right, and so I think I'm understanding it probably, and I guess what I'm getting at is, and I appreciate that we found these areas and these recommendations for the state. My understanding is with the work that Project Momentum did and in that process, like if I'm a teacher and a student comes and tells me, hey, I don't think we should have a test anymore, right? But here is an alternative, here's a solution, I can prove to you that it works. Or I can come to you with a solution to that problem. So I know we have limited time and scope, but I'm just wondering, as we talk about going to the state, instead of us coming, right, with the problem and the request, do we have a plan to say, well, look, we can prove to you that this works and this is what we've tried and maybe we are doing that? Because that's my question.
I think, I think we need to continue to engage with the state on these topics of basically accommodations for accountability. The Project Momentum accommodation came after three years of close collaboration with the state on a very specific accreditation plan issue, right? A very intense, focused collaboration with them. We need to continue to try to do the same thing in other areas, particularly, I think, as we're talking about tonight, English language learners and their needs. Which again, with us having the largest number of English language learners in Fairfax County, there's even more education that has to happen.
Okay, so I appreciate that and I don't want to
No, no.
Take this any further. I guess what I'm saying is when, I'm happy to sit at this table for two years and say, yes, let's advocate at the state, let's work with Michael Malloy. But anything more specific, right? That says, this is what we're doing and this is what's working and this is where advocacy would be helpful as opposed to us just working behind the scenes with the state? I don't know if that, if that is
I want to add one thing to that too, Dahlia, because when we say working behind the scenes, some of it, there are some, there is the ability of some of these things for the state superintendent to make some. So working behind the scenes is working with him directly. Then there's the advocacy with Michael Malloy at the state legislature level, which is some other things. And then the State Board of Ed, which is really the SO Innovation Committee where we're working with. So really understanding what are the, and I don't want to go into a lot of detail at the time, but there are different types of approaches we need to take depending on what it is that we're trying to accomplish and who has the authority over that. So, a lot of the advocacy we were referring, that Dr. Presidio was referring to, with Dr. Staples, were some of the things that the state superintendent can have some authority over, as well as perhaps some of the State Board of Ed.
We had a conference call with Dr. Staples two months ago. I submitted a letter, two letters, I'll put in Bray Bran briefing, with specific frameworks of what we'd love to see. It's one of these things, I don't want to get everybody too excited until we can deliver on some flexibilities that I think could help us. And, you know, I think the door is open for Fairfax County to be the model for what the proper services for EL kids would look like. We've gotten good results from the work we've done thus far, we have some additional ideas. And I honestly believe the rest of school divisions are waiting to see how the state responds to what Fairfax has done. The region four superintendents here in Northern Virginia asked for understandings about what I had sent to Dr. Staples. They want to see some of these same things happen. So, really, I think we're leading the way to try to get these changes. And I remain committed, as you know, Dr. Staples is retiring January 1st, that the next state superintendent, we are going to work very, very closely with to continue. The door's been opened, now we need to walk through the door and really get some far-reaching changes for our EL kids.
Thank you. Before Ms. McLaughlin and I speak, I have one go back, anybody else? I want to go back, Ms. Schultz.
So, two things. One, Dr. Bray Bran, you started to hit right on it. The point of some of these questions, and the honing in on the efficacy of what we do, is that, you know, I've been a longtime advocate of greatly slimming down our legislative advocacy program. I'd rather us go after two or three things and go at them with vim and vigor. I mean, the LCI is not just an albatross around our neck, you know, it's, you know, a mafia millstone around our neck that translates into, you know, out of every dollar in taxes a Fairfax County resident sends to Richmond, we get back 18 cents. That kills us. And if we could, you know, met out in these statistics, things like the disproportionality of, as Ms. Keys-Gamarra was bringing up, you know, do we have an unusually high, as the sixth-largest recipient of unaccompanied minors in the nation, do we have an undue burden in terms of meeting students who are 17, 18, 19-years-old with the same graduation requirements, no relief from the state, no additional money from the state? These are things that if we can effectively articulate, and I want to give you credit where you didn't take it, can you please bring up page 30, go down two more pages, that I originally missed? And this is, this is bearing the lead, right about, slide back down a little bit? Okay, in the middle here, this is the key. And if we could focus on this, because this is the win-win, is that if we are able to, given the probable progression of coursework, this is the student-growth progression, that if we do this, yes, it may cost more money to invest in the kids upfront, but you could potentially save, at the bottom of that paragraph, this would amount to a potential cost avoidance of $18.6 million if you have a cohort that could actually graduate in four years instead of eight years. Now, we're talking about not only what things cost, but potentially what things save. And if we start advocating, you know, to the state, both the state legislature and to the State Department of Education, and start talking about driving policy from the Board of Education at the state level, policy at our legislator level, and connecting the dots, you not only advantage these students in a much more rapid fashion in terms of the fact that they're more likely to graduate, they're more likely to have acquisitional language, and oh, by the way, you're going to save tens of millions of dollars on a single cohort. Now, this is how you start to craft a message. Now, this is where you bring education policy, fiscal policy, tax policy, you bring it all together and you bring it home. But we have to be able to effectively articulate that, and we can't do that if you guys don't give us the information in such a way that says, this is how you drive a message down to Richmond to help the kids, help the taxpayers, help us, you know, do what we're doing better.
Ms. McLaughlin.
So, just tapping on a few things. First of all, Ms. Schultz, to your point, because I think sometimes, listening to my colleagues, I'm not sure sometimes everybody realizes we're actually on the same page, all 12 of us. I think the public wants us to be on the same page, which is this. We have a finite amount of dollars. The board supervisors, the fiscal forecasts have all indicated we're not generating enough revenue in Fairfax County to do all the things that we want to do, and really providing that world-class education. So, it's not about that we're wanting to cut costs just because it feels good. What we're saying is, we have to spend our money well, and as effectively as possible, so that we can serve kids, not fail kids. And if it turns out that spending in this manner, the ROI isn't the grotesque of how cheaply we can do it, which I don't want anybody from this meeting thinking that, but it felt that way a little bit. What we're talking about here is, if we can do this really well, then if there's cost savings so we can help the 190,000 kids with this finite amount of money, then we're a better school system, we're a better board. That's what I felt like I was hearing, and that's what, I believe, Dr. Bray Bran, you're trying to change the dialogue here. We need to stop pitting this conversation of, if you're talking about how things cost, then it must be that you're just wanting to take money away from kids. No, it's how well can we spend it in the best way possible so we capitalize on the best education for them?
If I could, I joke, LT, they think I'm going to, I'm invested in McDonald's, I call them nuggets. The nugget is to pull, when we have cost, and then put the ROI and cost avoidance side by side, and then you go, hmm, wow, we're going to spend more right now, but we have a chance to actually reduce our budget less here in the out-years by this amount. This is an investment this board's willing to make. So, we need to, we need to be better, and you've seen a lot of nods, pull those numbers and metrics together as we keep moving on the strategic plan work that we'll be doing Thursday. Then you'll be in a better decision to go, do we want to put our dollars here for that ROI? Do we want to put our dollars over here for that one? And I think we're going to actually find the board coming closer together on what your key priorities are than necessarily farther apart. So, actually, this has been helpful for me, and I think it's going to help us in future presentations that we present, so thank you.
The second thing is that, I apologize, I did not have a very good poker face when a few things were being said. And it had to do with the recommendation that I'm universally hearing our colleagues in support of, which is, you know, being able to designate the division-level unit to oversee the coordination and the delivery. I mean, I heard everybody sort of saying, this is great, you know, the Office of ESOL Services, yes, please do. Where I caught my breath, and I really struggled, and even Dr. Bray Bran, you used the word permission, and my head almost exploded. I'm thinking, what is the point of having a superintendent, a deputy superintendent, chief of academic, you know, instruction, assistant superintendent of instruction? If you guys, as a leadership team, are all there to say, our work at Central is to identify national best practice, and then we want to bring it to our schools so they can deliver it to our kids? Just seeking to understand, I don't think you meant to say, we're, you know, wanting to get permission for Rich Polio or anyone to go in and have our schools deliver that? Because I don't think it's a permission thing at all. I mean, the whole point of why we have central administration is to say, we need them to deliver instruction on the front lines. And while they're doing that, you guys continuously improve the system through best practice and the research, and then we deliver it back out again. And so, if we're formalizing this in a way that we haven't done before, I think that's great. But in the end, my expectation is both a parent, and a resident, and a school board member is that I would hope our schools understand that the information that Francisco, and Sloan, and Rich, and anyone else, Mark Greenfelder, bringing best practice into the building, as well as then, what I heard you say, our regional assistant superintendents then have to be doing the monitoring. And I'm amazed at some of the work I've been doing with my RASs. Everyone's well-intentioned, but I don't think we have the framework yet set up with our RASs on, you know, what does it mean to provide that instructional oversight? And, you know, if you've got issues of, you know, grading inconsistencies, or things like that, how do they have on their checklist to make sure that, so we have that better standardization and uniformity? And so, I'm encouraged that you're looking at something as essential as this with the growing need that we're having, and saying, we have all this great information, but if it's not being delivered and then monitored, then we're almost having a disconnect between what's known and understood at Central, but what's, I mean, I'm trying to gauge a reaction.
This is the knowing-doing gap. We talked about this even 10-years ago. No one knows more than Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm telling you that, I'm prepared to tell the community that. It's the doing at a scale. Remember, there are 200 schools, so that's the challenge, right? Oh, you all even asked me this in the interview. I could go to every, and by the way, I am going to schools, I'm still, I'm still doing it, at scale, just a little differently, just like I mentioned. Science, okay, so we have the new science pacing guy. What did I want to see when I went to Brookfield? I went to see a science class, let me see it, and oh my gosh. I don't know that the teacher knew I was coming in there, because the, and this is my last go-around of going with the region. Then on Fridays, I'm going wherever I want to go, right? I want to be, you know, but people are excited, they want to see, hey, look what I've done. I am doing, you know, like when you're a student, look, I've done my homework. It's just, at scale, it's been one of those, and it's us, it's our best, it's our best glow, it's our growth. It's Scott Bray Bran, he's at Fairfax High, he's got it all, he doesn't need any, he'll call me if he needs help. But we've got to realize, people have come and gone. We have new people in central office and in schools. And we've got to, we've got to be clear about, we believe you can do it, we hired you for it, but here are the supports, and we're going to look at data together, we're going to talk about it together. And we've already created structures, we've already talked about one that's working, and really recreate that in different ways around different issues. The ESOL department is frankly taking away their recommendations tonight with, here's the model, here's the training, and then we're going to more closely work with RASs to monitor whether these things are happening in your schools or not. And I'm confident, frankly, that we're, I hope I'm leading as a superintendent, that frankly, I'm going to connect the dots by going out. I sit and hear what everybody says, and I get to go myself and see. Hmm, we talked about this, let me see if that's happening. What is, how are the two programs that Lee and Stuart are going? And ask the teachers myself, not as a gotcha, but as a just check-in to both say, are what we're saying up here at policy, is it happening in practice? So, I really do think it's happening. I mean, you'll be the judge over time, and if you don't think it is, then I'll know about it. But I absolutely think that we're headed in that direction. And the good thing I want you to know as a board member, people are excited. They want to see leadership in central office in schools, supporting them and helping them. Overall, 99% of folks do. And I'm confident we're going to continue to move in the right direction.
Great. In terms of the report itself, one of the things I was trying to locate and wasn't sure if it's in there, and I just didn't see it, the actual schools that we benchmarked against. Is that listed in there?
You mean the comparison school division? Unfortunately, we did not list them because the schools, to provide us their cost per pupil, did not give us permission to name them. That was the deal. As you may imagine, many school divisions are somewhat protective of those costs. So, that was, to get the information, we had to promise not to identify them.
Okay, so how many schools do we benchmark against?
There were, the school divisions, I apologize, it's been about a year. I can get you those numbers, and I can give you the regions of the country and the sizes of the county without naming names.
Right, that would be great as a next step, I would like to get that information. And when we benchmarked, do we benchmark not just cost, but like their outcomes?
We did not benchmark against their outcomes, we benchmarked against the design of the program, whether they were, in the state of Virginia, you cannot provide bilingual instruction, so we did not benchmark against counties that provided bilingual instruction. We benchmarked against programs that were sheltered instruction, similar to what we do here. And we did look for school divisions that were similarly diverse and suburban, not always as large as Fairfax, as you may imagine. That's kind of hard to get all of those variables together.
And why did we choose to benchmark just the design of the program versus the outcomes of the program?
It is, we chose in terms of benchmarking the design of the program because certain designs have certain cost efficiencies, and the focus was on providing comparable cost. It is very hard because of the outcomes in the state of Virginia to find all of those variables in terms of the diversity and the size and the design of the program also having the same outcomes. When you're comparing across different outcome measures, it's hard to get it all together.
But could we have done just even graduation rates as an outcome measure to benchmark? Because if that's what we're hoping to do is, cost savings is, you know, their graduation rates, I mean, wouldn't that at least be a universal benchmark to sort of see, if we're doing this ELL program, what are their graduation rates, you know, population to population? It's just a marker, I mean, we need to want to do something. Because I have to say, benchmarking our design versus their design and cost to their cost, but in the end, we all know, it doesn't really matter, as we talked about earlier. It might cost more, but your return is tenfold better, and so, you want to spend more. Their design may look differently than ours, but if we don't know what their outcomes are, we don't know if their design's better than our design, or vice versa.
I can go back and provide some of that information. Our focus for the return was on benchmarking our previous approach to our new approach, but I can go back and look at some of that information.
Because one of the things that Ms. Kofax and I went to this NSBA, you know, initial session when Dr. Garza was here, and we were the ones who mentioned to her, hey, they've got this newcomer school within a school, and their graduation rates were phenomenal. I mean, these newcomers were coming in, and with one to two years, they were graduating at the same rate as the base population. I mean, it was remarkable. And that was what, you know, definitely led this enthusiasm within Fairfax County. And so, I had this expectation that since we went and identified this amazing school within a school, we already knew their results, then we were going to come and pilot our school within a school with Lee and Stuart, and then be able to see, could we replicate similar results? And I don't know that this report does that. And if it doesn't, I guess I would ask the question, why wouldn't we want to be looking at that as a way, especially with Lee and Stuart that are really more modeled on that newcomer school?
I think over the long term, we could do that. Right now, the students who participated in the first year of the program are in 11th grade, so it would take a couple more years before we could look at their graduation rates. But it could definitely be looked at as the program progresses.
I guess that's looking at it that they all came in as freshmen. Didn't we have some kids who, when we started the pilot, they were already sophomores or juniors? And so, it's possible that it doesn't necessarily take four years in order to see that the newcomer school was helping. But if that's how you guys are doing it, that's fine, I would just ask that we do that.
I mean, there's some different things we could look at. I mean, you know, one of the things that we showed was, for example, students who were level three did not receive, did not take English 9. Two-years ago at Lee and Stuart, even level-three students started taking English 9. So, perhaps some of those students have already graduated. So, we could start, you know, I think we could look at it in different ways to track. As, I would agree- As I would agree with Liddy, though, we will need, you know, at least one more year to see how those initial cohort students did with their graduation.
And I do not have a PhD or a doctorate, so I, my skill level in statistics is, is limited. But with this report, I mean, was there the type of statistical analysis to look at statistical significance between, you know, when we were doing these kind of comparisons of, I mean, even the things like the climate that the students were experiencing?
When we looked at the impact of those organizational structures and the learning environments, we looked at the relation between the presence of those factors in the schools and student outcomes. And the report details all of the significance testing and effect sizes to be able to show the strength of those factors on the performance of our students. Basically, there are certain factors that were a little more impactful at either elementary or high school. But overall, there was a, there was a relationship between the presence of learning. We basically replicated what research said. So that, that actually, we do have all of that in detail in the report. We did not control for those things in, in other school systems because we don't really have access to that.
When I, but I looked at it, I think I saw one statistical point that said like .25 to maybe .37. But I would just say, Dr. Braybrand, in order for the board and maybe the public to read it and understand, what is that telling me? I think that would be where, if you all in future report, you know, sort of translate that statistical significance to mean what, you know? Unless you are a statistician, you're not going to necessarily appreciate it. It just looks like a number there. But it's, we're not talking raw percentages.
Absolutely. I, I, I'm thinking about the Hattie work that we just had up where we had the, the, the impact on student achievement. Do you remember that and the zone? And you guys really dialed in on that. We can create something like that when we do statistical significant tests.
Okay. And then just the last point I wanted to bring to everybody's attention because I've appreciated Sloan and Francisco have been involved with me on this dialogue. We had a young lady who was coming in from another school district outside of Virginia. And she was born here in the United States. Her parents', English was a second language for them. But English was her primary language. She was a gifted student. And when their family registered her, FCPS said, you've got to come to Dunloring, and we've got to give you a foreign language assessment test. And so the, the family and the child were distressed about this because she was a US citizen, born here. Her primary language is English. She was not an ELL student in the other district she was coming from, was identified as gifted. And so this was again, not the fault of anyone with our system. But I'm sorry, Dahlia's not here because she was, you know, running the dialogue. This is where we need to make sure the state gives us the latitude of saying, okay, this student came from outside of Virginia, so there wasn't necessarily the Virginia required, you know, testing, but it was a really unnecessary stressor. And I, I'm actually familiar with another family where this happened too. And I just think we've got to, you know, this is where we as elected officials, if we don't press this at the upcoming general assembly, I think we're missing an opportunity here because it's, our staff is already stretched trying to test and evaluate our, our ELL incoming students. That was a time, you know, suck for the family and for our staff that was just wholly unnecessary.
Yeah, so just real briefly, I really appreciated Megan bringing this particular family situation to our attention. And I appreciated you meeting with us and going over it. Without getting in too much into the details, I think most of the board members are aware that federal law requires the states to put home language surveys in place. And Virginia has a home language survey that complies with federal law that every division in the state is required to use the same questions. That being said, right, because your answer to those questions about what language is spoken into the home can trigger, is supposed to trigger further assessment. That being said, we also want people to use their professional judgment. And we have a system in place where we want folks to identify situations, just like the one that Megan brought to our attention, to say, this is probably one that we can exercise our professional judgment on. So we're continuing to review that with our staff and make sure that they're aware of that. And when board members hear those situations, please do go ahead and forward them to Rich or to myself because those are things that we need to follow up on. So thank you very much.
No, no, thank you. And then just for the public who might end up watching this, I want to make sure I have the clarity as well. So we used to have the Office of Program Evaluation. We are now calling it ORC, the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement, correct? Okay, so for anyone who used to think of Ricardo Sockwell and Office of Program Evaluation, do not go to our website. Do not Google it. You're not going to find it. Because I was sitting here looking at the documents and thinking to myself, this all sounds like our program evaluation. But I think that it, you know, this is, I guess my one closeout question is, because I couldn't find it on the website, how many staff are in our Office of Research and Strategic Improvement? Or as some of you called tonight, ORC. How many are in there? Total number?
I think we have, yes, nine.
So I'm just going to put my little plug in that I think this is very important work. Dr. Braybrand, you said you'd like for us to be state national leaders, and I fully agree. But in order to do that, we have to make sure that we actually have a robust ORC. And I've watched this school division whittle it down from when Pat Murphy was here with the Office of Accountability, and it just keeps getting sort of smaller and smaller. And I think if we're going to really want to champion best practice, part of it is, we've got to make sure we have the staff that can do the evaluations and, and then bring it forward. And because I think everyone in this room agrees, saying something doesn't make it true. It's the evidence-based research and the studies and the reports that you're all doing is then how then we can know we're doing good work. And then we can actually champion it to other divisions around the Commonwealth and in the country. So anyway, I, I do appreciate the hard work. And, you know, obviously you can tell we're all very passionate. And this was a well worth the wait for us to get here tonight.
I'll finish up, and I've been brief. I just want to thank you all for the hard work and excellent programming you've done. We have come a long way since 2014, when many of us took the road trip down to Texas to get a look at their programming, you know, bringing back suggestions and crosswalking. You, you took a very thoughtful time period. Well, that was before 2014, I think, because it, it was implemented then. It started being implemented. So, but, you know, I, I, as, I'll use Dr. Braybrand's words because they start getting catchy, Dr. Braybrand, the nuggets, the nuggets that I, I am, am hearing. And I think we've all, and I just, and this is the way I start off my comments, really kudos to you all. I know how hard you work. I know how difficult this is because I know it is a demographic that is changing and has intense needs. I know that because a lot of them are in Region Three, a lot of these kids come with these tremendous needs in numbers that we hadn't seen before. Just gauging, you know, with my family, what it looked like when my son, and then four years later, when my daughter, the high school experience, things like that. So I know how, how, how difficult it has been on our system, I think. I don't want to belabor this because I've talked to, I think each, I've talked to Dr. Presidio, Mr. Polio, Dr. Braybrand and Francisco about putting policy into practice that had some growing pains. And I think, I, I don't want to belabor that, but I, I think I've shared with you all. I, I just want to say to some of my board members, if I haven't talked to you about it, I think it, it's important that if you want to talk to me about it, there were some real problems, I think, about repurposing monies in the schools. And I think the suggestions that you gave will help some of those. Particularly, I think it's important that we ensure there is support in the building to make certain that the best prac, there is execution in best practice because of, you know, the one example I will share with my colleagues if you haven't heard already. It's, it's, you know, there were a couple of my schools where, you know, the, the ability to, you know, you have your same pot of teachers, and so you had to pull some teachers who were no longer teaching an AP or IB course, and it allowed the school to go into static blocks in some cases. And it didn't offer the rigor or ability for some kids to take classes. And that was a reality that happened in at least three of my schools. And that was last year. I'm hopeful that, you know, we've talked about that in, in those schools. And, and I can talk to you again about it, and the specificity. I talked to Mr. Polio about it when we were prepping for this work session. You know, just to give you an idea, my colleagues, I was on the budget. I was the budget chair last year, so, you know, I had the numbers in my head. And when Dr. Lockard and Dr. Duran told me the number of children that came in between January and April or March of April, the number was like 700 children that came in with, with extensive ESOL 1, SEIF students, ESOL 1, 2, and SEIF. And a majority of them came into Region Three. So it's, it's extremely important that we understand, if you're not seeing this in your schools, it's, this has been something I've been passionate about. I, it's imperative that we use a best practice model to get these kids what they need because, you know, invest now and savings later. It's kind of like with the pre-K thing. You know, it's, you invest now in order to get good results later. And some of this, we are, it's not, you're, you're all doing it with, with purpose and best practices. But some of it is, is the numbers. We had to catch up to some of the numbers, I think, in some ways. So I do appreciate that. I think I'm, I'm very supportive of the, all the recommendations you gave, particularly the additional counselors. And one thing that I have heard from teachers, and again, people talked about the project momentum model, stealing a little bit from, from one of them, and I think it was PTA driven. But if there's a way, again, we can take best practices and give these to, to the building. Because from my principals and teachers in some of these schools, we talk about cultural proficiency. And I think it, it needs to go both ways. There was somebody in the project momentum principal group that talked about the PTA. And they, the PTA helped set up a program, and it was, you know, it was called Bringing Up Blank Children in an American School System, you know, insert, I, I think that was, I think that particular group was bringing up Hispanic children in an American school system. And I think that is so important because you, my school is very, very, the, the class school that I sent my children to is very, very diverse. And you saw the fear, like the literal fear in parents' eyes. They weren't really sure. I mean, you've got it, we take so much for granted. What is, what is prom? What is graduation? What is, what are football games? Those are things these, these families don't know. And they're a little bit fearful. So I think it's extremely important that I thought that programming is something that we could look at. And if we could take whatever they did in a PTA level and, and have, you know, after school programming or something, you know, put a little model together, that, that would be excellent, I think. But thank you all. The, the results are, you know, the proof is in the results right now in these last few years that we've been tracking with these two schools. And I look forward to seeing the results of the others. But I would encourage my colleagues, it's extremely important. And, and I'm hearing all that you're saying and, and, you know, making, making certain that we, we look at, at every part of our budget. But it's, if this is something that's working, and I think, Dr. Braybrand, we need to continue to fund this when you put your, your budget together and fund it in a way that gets us through this big surge that we've seen. And maybe, maybe it will, you know, level out and we'll be able to catch up a little bit. But right now, we're still playing a little bit of catch up. And I just appreciate all of your hard work and thank you for being here to this late hour tonight. And we were, we are done with this work session, and we will take a two-minute break.
You don't have next steps?
Oh, I'm sorry. I always get that. Next steps, please.
Did, did I miss, I was looking in here for the distribution of the number of students across elementary, middle, and high school. Is that in here? I was peeling through and I couldn't seem to find it. Oh, and the year one.
Update it. Oops, sorry. It's in the year one report. We did not update it for year two in terms of the detailed breakdown that we did in year one.
So if you want to add that as a next step, write some words, and we'll go through these. Okay? Number one, Ms. Corbett Sanders, is that what you would ask for? Ms. Corbett Sanders. Is that what you asked for?
Yes, it's actually two bullets. The first is include the English 11 outcomes at the end of the year. And then the second one is provide the actual, provide, provide the proposed cost of implementing the program in additional 11 schools, not repurposing existing resources.
I don't think it's 11. I don't know the number, but can you just put in additional schools?
That's fine.
Well, but, but that was what we used, Dr. Lockard, if you're right. We just used that for budgeting purposes last year. I mean, that was, that was kind of an arbitrary number. We said, where are we seeing the most intense needs? So, so.
We have a, it's like a five, six slides that we send out to everyone, to you as a budget chair. So I sent that to Dr. Braybrand. He can share that with everyone. It says the actual positions and what the cost would be and which schools those were as well.
Thank you. And, and that's my number two. Does anybody have objections to Ms. Corbett Sanders? Are we all kind of good with those first two? Shake heads if yes. Okay.
All right.
Yes. Right. Okay. Good, good catch, Sandy. All right, mine's fine unless anybody has an objection. It's just a description of our advocacy in case. Ms. F. ELL, high school. All right, clearly show the number of students who have a history of interrupted learning and, Janey, what, what, what did you want to say there?
Well, making sure that we're tracking SEIF so that as we look at accountability for on-time graduation, et cetera, so that we understand, because the kids who come to us at 17 with no formal education.
So where, where would you like that presented? Because I know we have the numbers, but how, how should we present it?
Right, trends, yeah.
Trends?
Show number and trends?
Number and trends. Right.
And that's just a follow-up in Braybrand briefing or?
Or whatever, or just going forward. As we, as we evaluate our program, it's, yeah, showing clear numbers and trends. And it's, let's say, it's trends of student achievement. It's trends. It's really regarding student achievement or outcomes, yeah. Because realizing that those.
So we can do it moving forward into next year is what we're talking about? So it's not right?
Right, exactly. It's just that, we, we have to, they're, they're really challenging youngsters. We can't expect them to do as well as the kids who come to us at 14 with some education behind them, so.
What you're saying is disaggregating the data to allow for us to actually pin, you know, focus in on different groups of students.
At least those two different groups, because there is, you would expect the outcomes and the, and the challenge to be different.
All right. I don't think there's any objection. Oh, you have a question?
I don't have an objection. I'm just wondering if. Can't hear me. Nobody ever says that. Anyway. What I was trying to do was be able to identify the cost, say, for example. to identify the costs, say, for example, you mentioned counselors, or there may be additional needs, whether the child has their family with them or not. Those types of things, I think we may need to evaluate so that there may be services needed for those kids that aren't needed for other ESOL children.
I recall, Karen, you were asking that very clearly, that could we disaggregate out the ELL population a little bit more so that we are identifying those who come with interrupted education as opposed to those who, you know, have fam...
Right. Say, for example, it's very different if you have, you know, a family moving here or someone, I'm sorry? Well, I was thinking I could add to Ms. Strauss's, just evaluate need levels such as availability of family support or need for counseling. Might be the easiest way to say it.
Maybe additional services?
Yes.
So I think Eileen would say evaluate additional, where he says additional, evaluate additional service needs.
Right. And just in parentheses, as an example, availability of family support might be one of those things that we evaluate.
All right. Ms. Heinz. Provide info that was shared with state regarding performance-based assessments.
That's kind of a little bit like number three. It's advocacy, and then we had in that advocacy document some assessment information. You could pull those two together.
Let's put those two together, then.
If you want.
It's really the same information. So I think it's just sharing the information that we've already provided to the state as a starting point.
One's about what our advocacy is.
Right.
The other one is...
That was part of what we submitted to the state. Yeah. It was included in that advocacy. Yeah.
All right, tying it together is good. So we can take, and then Megan.
That one's good. I had had the other bullet point request that if staff could provide a little more detail on the statistical data, where we were getting statistically significant findings, but, you know, provide that sort of additional descriptors for defining... Does that make sense to staff? Okay. For the findings, yeah.
All right. Let's, so everybody okay with those two? And then I had my last one, asking staff to work to develop best practice programming to assist parental engagement. I mean, I know we do that a little bit, but I think it's like, to assist with parental engagement in the ELL community particularly. Go ahead, you want to say something?
Well, I just said that, you know, that's part of the, that's part of the new standards that we've just published. So it's in there, and part of assistance of support, and then there are specific things, but we could, we could look at kind of what we're doing, what we're advocating, what we're recommending, and try to put something together.
I think some schools do it really well, and some schools need help, and that's why I'd like to just keep it in there.
Is there a way without creating too much work to update the distribution of students from year one to year two? I mean, I don't want to create work, but, you know, having an understanding of, because that's a, that's basically a K-12 cohort progression, and to understand where the hotspots are, like, you know, is the growth from, from an academic year to an academic year, does that change?
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, say no if it's hard.
No, we can do it. We can do it, I think.
So I would just say, update, update the distribution, update the distribution of students from year one. That's fine.
Okay, your mic, please.
One additional area that we have repeatedly spoken about tonight, which is the shared accountability model. In the future, having a debrief on whether the shared accountability model that's being recommended is actually working. And what I'm talking about there is that, you know, today, you guys do an excellent job of creating guidelines, and you do an excellent job of getting them out in professional development modules. What we don't have a handle on is the so what after you've done it. And so that shared accountability model that Dr. Braybrand, you've spoken about tonight as well, is something that I think everybody around this table is showing support for. But we have a habit of saying, yeah, 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 but then we don't get the outcomes in a period of time to say, yeah, we've done this and it works, or we did it and it didn't work, or we did it and it worked partially, and we need to make adjustments, which is what you started out tonight with, the ORC recommendations and how staff has responded to them. So just kind of as a discipline going forward to have that feedback.
All right. Thank you all. And now we are done with this work session.
Part one.
Part, part...